Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock. Everyone has made their order. Mr. Lenny, if I can get you to confirm that we have a forum, sir?
Yes, sir, we do.
Uh, Mr. Faust should be with us momentarily. I delayed by two minutes just to get him a little time. He was right across the street. So he'll be joining us momentarily. Council, you have an agenda before you that has been previously distributed. You're going to vote for a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda as distributed.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both signed. Thank you, council. Uh, city clerk, if you will make sure the minutes reflect who is here and who's not on the vote.
Yes.
And council, at this time, the next item on here is the approval of February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five minutes. Those who are distributed?
Make a motion to approve the minutes. Present it.
Have a motion?
Second.
Mr. Hannah?
I don't think we can.
Correct. Yeah, do you have your actions? I'm not able to accept that second.
Sir.
I do have a motion in the second. Now we're into a slight issue with passing.
And will you go out to buy it? I don't know that.
I may work there about.
He's here.
Fantastic. All right. Mr. Faust, I have a motion in the second to approve the minutes from February fourteenth that you were present for. Uh, so I'm calling for a vote to approve the minutes for February fourteenth as distributed.
That was big night.
So on that agenda item, the approval of February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five minutes, the council member, Stacey, who made the motion, Dr. Proctor made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both signed. Any discussion on that, council? Now, I know I called for that out of order. Thank you. Putting in some preview, Ms. Burgess.
Evening, council, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Little Burgess, planning director. So we had our planning commission meeting on Tuesday. We welcomed our two new members. They were sworn in, and they also did attend, as well as Mr. Jones, the, uh, the planning one oh one beforehand. So that was very nice to see some interaction. Uh, we, we have one hearing. It's a variance request to allow for an accessory structure without a primary structure on a commercial lot. Uh, the, uh, planning commission recommended approval for zero, uh, with additional conditions that they felt were needed and ordered for it to be allowed. Uh, and we will also have on Monday night the package alcohol sales for Publix, which all advertising and background checks went smoothly.
Fantastic. Thank you, ma'am. Council, any questions? Thank you, ma'am.
She did a great job on Tuesday.
Yes.
Second.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, Ms. Burgess, can you speak on behalf of one secondary structure without a primary?
So the, um, their location out there, so it's three hundred acres, three hundred thirteen acres. It's the largest single land use in, in the city here. And right now, they're using it as a combination private kind of, uh, outdoor club as well as farming. So they've been planting, first they timbered a little bit, and now they're planting fruit trees. And then so it's one of the things that they'd like to do. So they don't have any bathrooms or shower out there. So what they're proposing is a bathhouse as an accessory structure on well and septic. So you're not allowed to have a, uh, an accessory structure without a primary, and there's no other structures.
Yeah, I was just wondering why they won't just put their reason for secondary without a primary.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next item on the agenda is Parks and Parks Committee, I think. Uh, Mr. Hannah, Mr. Faust, not leaving Mr. Douglas.
And I'm gonna help, uh, or call on, uh, Mr. Douglas to help fill in the gaps here and help me out where I sound like a mummy in full. Appreciate the help there. But, uh, so we have an opportunity in front of us to partner with an organization to help out with, uh, maintenance and operations of the baseball fields. So we are currently working with Siphon on, um, a lease agreement on that. And so, uh, we do have to go through a process of RFPs, and we are looking at that. And so more to come, but just wanted to give you an update on that. Honest, fair?
No, it feels good. And, and part of it, council, you may recall, I believe, uh, we had received direction from the council, uh, coming out of committee in August of last year to, to pursue this with legal. Uh, I do think that just because of life, uh, the agreement that Mr. Siphon had provided, uh, there had just been a delay in terms of reviewing, perhaps, uh, fall weather, holidays, et cetera, et cetera. So Mr. Hannah picked this back up, uh, submitted it to, uh, legal. And I do think that, uh, Mr. Siphon admittedly had communicated that at the time that we had talked about this, uh, he had drafted or considered something that was more in line with an intergovernmental agreement. Well, obviously, uh, this would not be an intergovernmental agreement. This would be some sort of lease agreement of facilities and which is acceptable to do, except the process would go through the formal, uh, RFQ or RFP process. So one of the things that, uh, Ms. Goldner had suggested, and Mr. Siphon had immediately said that was a great idea in the immediate, is if council wanted to consider on Monday evening, uh, an application, uh, submitted by the group to utilize the public spaces as other, uh, groups do, uh, to, in terms of just kind of getting through the process, because it can take several months. And you may recall that, uh, even at the staff level, me will sometimes try to say, hey, let's move forward doing this. And then legal comes back and says, well, after thinking about it, deliberating, we need to really go through this process. And at times, it will take four, six, eight weeks, um, of, of delay. And you'll hear something later on in the report of, uh, a similar situation that y'all had given us, uh, approval to move forward with. We consulted with legal, and we went through a formal RFQ process. So I don't foresee there being challenges with getting the legal aspect up to par so that when you all are approached by this entity, you'll at least have known that the committee went through the steps as legal was required to say, here is the terms of leasing public property. Uh, here are the terms associated with it. And then the council can then vote on that as to whether or not that is something they want to move forward. Does that make any more sense, or just trying to expound upon the committee?
Yes, sir. Anything else, county committee?
No.
How does that?
Counsel, any questions? All right. Next item on the agenda, city manager office updates on a RFP second fire station. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, sir. And, uh, I'm gonna call Chief Sher to come on down and, uh, to re-primate up every line and sentence and punctuation.
We've never done anything like that.
Uh, then, just to kind of tee it up, Mr. Mayor and council, uh, as, as we talked about just a few seconds ago, this is a situation where you all had given direction to amend the, uh, twenty twenty squash to encumber the necessary plans to go forward with second fire station. Uh, obviously, we had just executed, I think it was the January meeting, the, uh, the necessary documents to do the lot split because the, the water tower was on the same parcel as the cabin. So we had gotten the, uh, bondholder to approve separating the cabin off. So as such, here we are. Uh, so I didn't want you to think we were just sitting on laurels doing nothing. It was getting to the point of having the bondholder okay it, which is just procedural. And so Chief Sher is working on a proposal. And I think the package you had emailed, the date was a three-week period. I think in front of you highlighted is now a four-week period. That was the only comment that legal had, and we already remedied that. So everything else, um, Chief Sher says has been reviewed by legal.
So we'll start with the cover page, request for proposal for fire station construction.
In summary.
Exactly.
Skipping to the last one.
Well, needless to say, I'm not an attorney, so I'm, I'm not gonna take credit for this power document or the majority of it, for that matter. Uh, this was a template that we got to finance, so it's been used before. Uh, one that we added was specifications in the rear of it, which is what we want the building built to. Um, and just to also summarize, this RFP is for site work and construction of the addition on, for the building. So basically, the two-bedroom building and what we're calling a mudroom, or, or we're just gonna attach it to the rear cabin. Um, and that's where our apparatus will be stored, and then we will have necessary equipment in there as well. And it's gonna finish out with electrical or anything else we may need in there. The RFP covers that. Uh, what the RFP does not cover is the stuff that the Fire Department's managing directly, which is, uh, free removal, upgrades to the septic system, and also landscaping towards the end. Uh, that'll be something we'll handle. I'm gonna partner with Ms. Burgess to try and make sure we manage our soil erosion stuff properly. Smart. We get trouble. So, um, and then we'll partner with, uh, obviously with Water Department as well for utilities and needs we have there. So we'll definitely lean on our, our in-house experts for different areas. Um, I believe the date on this, when it closes, is just after the past our first meeting in April. So you probably won't see this until the May meeting, I believe.
We, we got it. So the way that the, the state law reads is you have to advertise for four weeks. Uh, they don't associate it with days. So we've got it ending the Thursday. The way that March to April, we've got that two-weeker in between from the work session. So we'll have the work session, and then the following Thursday is when the actual proposals come in. So it would be a quick turnaround time. Uh, but I think that because y'all have been working diligently with the committee, we should be able to come out on Monday and give a recommendation of whomever's submitted. Uh, I think it's the April sixth, that would be?
That's right. So, yeah, so you, that's not mistaken. I was thinking of the first week in April, maybe, so.
Anything further, Mr. Douglas? Chief?
I believe.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for me?
The, uh, any data, uh, low voltage, y'all wanna do that off this contract, off this proposal?
Says what?
Data. Data. And is there any data in this building? Any?
No, I mean, there, there won't be electrical in there, but there's not many communication equipment like that.
Okay.
No restroom, just?
No restroom.
Is that a laundry room?
There is a washer that's included in there, but we're gonna tie that into the, uh, system that's already in the existing cabin, because all that's gonna be in that mudroom, since it's close, that's gonna cut down on costs as far as how you run additional lines and make additional taps in the septic.
Good.
Anything further, council? Thank you, chief. Next item, I'm being auctioneer services, Mr. Douglas?
Yes, sir. And, uh, do we wanna keep this to make sure Chief comes back on Monday for discussion, or we gotta put this on, uh, consent?
Counsel, do I hear any objection for this being a consent item?
No.
No problem.
So place it on consent for me. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And, uh, again, uh, y'all had provided direction, uh, uh, surplusing our equipment. And I'll tell you that, um, this is where it is good to have good staff and good legal. I was ready to move forward with, uh, kind of getting that going. And because of the professional services, we, uh, drafted a, a request for qualifications of professional services, and Zachary Waters Auctions, um, did submit. I believe it is in front of you. Uh, you may recall that, um, this entity had done some workforce in twenty twenty, and we had a hundred thirty thousand dollars. Uh, that was auctioned off. So it is our hope that, um, if this is something y'all like us to move forward with, um, obviously, the surplusing is one thing, but having the actual auctioneer as a professional services, uh, I wanted to put that on the agenda. And we would most likely have that auction sometime in April. Uh, so it gives the, the better part of March, uh, to prepare, start marketing, and getting ready for an April, uh, sales day.
Counsel, any questions?
This quote that's on here on the proof of coverage says it's a quote, not proof of coverage?
Correct. Uh, I had advised, uh, during the, uh, questioning that, uh, he did not carry any, but if he was selected, he would. So instead of him just going and purchasing it, not knowing if he's gonna get it, I told him that the, the quote was suffice, because what he's gonna end up doing most likely is getting a day of or a week of, uh, coverage.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Uh, do we have a, do we know what percentage he would charge?
He does it to where it's, I think, on the buyer's end, because I don't think we paid him the last time. I think he included it on the buyer's end.
Oh, I'm sure.
I think there's, um, I think it would be nice if he, somewhere we disclose in full transparency that, that he's a boy. I don't know how you mean when that's, uh...
Oh, yes, sir. And, and part of, part of going through this exercise was to make sure that, uh, he did do it, uh, five years ago. And mistake on me, I didn't make this RFQ process go through. Um, and this time, putting this before you all, um, he is aware that he has to care of insurance. Uh, he cannot do this on the clock. Uh, that will have to be done separately. There will be a specific clock out, uh, if he's gonna do anything relating to the auction. So, yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Let me refer from the council. Uh, I'm not gonna ask for it to be on consent, because I believe it will be contingent upon the insurance requirement. So we'll need to make, uh, if there's a motion before to approve, um, then it'll be contingent upon the couple of things. Item C, budget amendments?
Yes, sir. I don't know if the admin committee wants to jump in, or if they wanna just defer to me to just kind of give a synopsis. Uh, Ms. Lindsay had met, we met last Wednesday with committee to kind of walk through. Uh, this is not going to be the final twenty twenty-four budget amendments. Uh, this is just kind of Lindsay's final before the auditors come next Tuesday. Uh, so what would happen is she's trying to get the books completely straightened up. Uh, I know we've received a franchise check, um, on yesterday, so she's gonna include that in the actual, because it's, you put that back to twenty-four, even though you received it in sixty days, within sixty days of this, this calendar year, receipt back to twenty twenty-four proceeds. So then that way, when the auditors just come in, they can look and see that the revenues and expenditures, um, are as close to aligning as they should be generally true. Uh, so just to hit some highlights, uh, if you're, you're curious, this is unaudited. I told Lindsay that I would add the disclaimer that this is unaudited. Um, the twenty twenty-four adopted budget had a use of fund balance of two nineteen, six twenty-nine. Uh, you may recall that we amended the budget in June, and it was going to be a use of fund balance of eight twenty-three, four oh seven. Uh, at year end, and this is why you have to receive in, you know, thirty, sixty days, ninety days, general interest, final audit, uh, numbers, and amended numbers, because twelve thirty-one twenty-four, the use of fund balance was projected at six hundred, two thousand, four twenty-one. Uh, and as of now, that has been pushed down to three eighty-two, four seventy-six. So part of what we have all along tried to say is, when we approached you all in the summer of last year to amend the budget, we knew there was going, already gonna be a use of fund balance. Some of the revenues that should have started coming in March, April, May, June, had not. Therefore, the reason we were putting in projected numbers of use of fund balance is to say, if these numbers do not come in, your fund balance use is not gonna be two hundred, it's going to be eight hundred. Well, then it's gonna be six hundred. The goal is at this point, and there's, we're really, the franchise check we got yesterday was pretty much the last revenue that we were waiting on. Uh, that's why we were a use of fund balance of three eighty-two. So I wanna commend this council and commend, you know, this premature staff for holding the line, continuing to do a good job, uh, all of last year, uh, to try to minimize the use of fund balance. So what you'll see on the, uh, uh, and we'll send this spreadsheet out to you all, uh, but I just wanted to make sure that y'all are commended for saying, look, we trust you, we wanna keep holding it. Um, I will say that it is not a, a management tool to keep using fund balance year over year, but if we can minimize how much we use and still get things done and still keep, um, the levels of service, then I think it is commendable. So...
Brandon, what was that, two nineteen, six twenty-nine number you gave us?
That was the, uh, twenty twenty-four adopted budget, use of fund balance.
Original budget.
Original budget.
Okay. All right. So you got a projection on the fund balance?
Yeah. In terms of what our overall fund balance is, uh, so the audited use of, audited fund balance in, when we had the presentation in June of last year, ending fiscal year twenty, uh, twenty-three, I think we were at about three, three point two, if I recall. Um, but I can give that to you before Monday, yes, sir.
Okay. Anything further, again?
Just curious.
Item D, IGA public own properties?
Yes, sir. And so some of these items, um, I just forwarded you all, um, a document that unfortunately I was out of the office for the better part of today, but Mr. Siphon did, uh, comment on this particular IGA, uh, between, uh, proposed by the county to the city. Uh, it's in relation to, uh, county properties and improvements made thereof are essentially, um, at their discretion. City-owned properties, buildings in the unincorporated county would be at our discretion. And most jurisdictions have some sort of formalized agreement, um, eventually. There are some communities who've never formalized it. It's just a practice between sovereign entities that you're in the, you're, if you're in the county seat, um, like we are, you're gonna have county buildings in your city limits. And so most jurisdictions will just say, yep, you're doing your thing, because ultimately it's your liability. Um, very few cities have any sort of properties or buildings in unincorporated, uh, in terms of ownership. So, but the way that it's written is if we did, it would follow us as the sovereign entity to do any sort of improvements based upon our code, et cetera. I did, uh, send this to you all, Mr. Siphon's opinion. He'll be here Monday evening, uh, that he is fine with this. Uh, he noted four, uh, minor editing suggestions dealing with, uh, abbreviation, and that was the extent of it. Uh, but it's just a verbally, um, I take a position that that's just a good practice to have. Uh, but this would just solidify it if council wanted to consider it.
Now, counsel, item D and E are similar in conversation. So the public own properties, uh, specifically when you start looking at areas like the airport, where, uh, there's city and county lines that have been drawn, uh, those are conversations the chair and I have had about the airport, the property over there that is currently zoned, um, in the county, that conversations occurring about annexation, where the county will move forward on paperwork to formally recognize that that is in the city. Uh, this would allow them to build their facilities under their guidance, under their regulations, not have to follow our regulations for building. Um, and as Mr. Douglas mentioned, as the county government, city government, that'll be a good partnership of how they can build under their regulations. So that's a conversation that's currently going.
I hate to do this, but I'm...
Yes, sir.
...on a border. I think the, um, I really hate to do it.
Go ahead.
I think there's controversy over whether that city, uh, where that property applies.
Yes.
And, uh, I don't want to, uh, I don't want anyone to assume that we are, um, um, pushing for, uh, incorporation into our city limits on a piece of property that is, uh, very likely already in our city. Um, and so I just wanna make sure that, uh, you know, the end goal is, is described as that being in the city, and if that means just acknowledgement, uh, based on a, a prior, uh, lack of de-annexation by former council, um, versus, um, a, a formal, um, re-annexation. I just wanna make that one clear.
Yes. Well, you did a pretty good job defining it versus what I did, so thank you. Point of order is accepted on that for sure. Um, yes. Any questions on the public own properties, council?
So the standard is set by the, so the county will have to build to their standard, even though it may be different than ours, uh, either, uh, more stringent or less, but ultimately they'll have that responsibility, um, as a county-owned, um, building, or as a county-owned building. Yes, sir. So, so if they sell that building, uh, what, what to, uh, either, well, let's just say a private entity, what would be the consequences of that sale related to, uh, non-conforming structure in our city?
So in terms of code with respect to your just NAPs, mechanical, logical plumbing, your, your basic building codes are pretty much really gonna be standard across the board. So any, any jurisdiction, school, county, city, they're gonna build. Most of the time, what the disconnect is, is any aesthetics or any standards associated with site development requirements and/or facade requirements. So if, if a county owned a particular building or property with building improvements on it, they sold that to a, um, a, a private entity, and the private entity was going to, um, make no improvements. Uh, and this, this can be something that, uh, legal can verify. Uh, it would say in a non-conforming status if they're just gonna operate it as is. Now, if it's something that they're gonna have to make some improvements of, and it's past a certain monetary threshold, a fifty percent or more, then they'd have to come into compliance with the standards as the jurisdiction. If they're just coming in and turnkeying and operating, uh, we don't go back retroactively and say, okay, well, now you're gonna have to go and rip this facade up because you purchased it from them. Uh, if they were to do certain improvements that exceeds that fifty percent threshold, then that will trigger the new standards that it's no longer under the county ownership, and it would be another entity that does not have an IGA with us. Does that make any sense?
It does make some sense. Um, Mary, do we have, are we, are we operating under the International Building Code and the National Electric Code? We, could we document it that 's our standard?
We accept every year DCA's minimum standards, which include the new updated twenty, I believe it's twenty twenty-three...
Sorry.
...electric code.
Okay.
Uh, and then our standard building code, which I think they updated in twenty twenty-one, maybe.
Does the county do the same thing, you know?
I'm not aware of how they, what they do.
Okay.
They are less stringent than we are.
And the other thing, I'm a little bit concerned about things like fire suppression, particularly in certain areas that might be involved. But that would be regulated, I presume, by, uh, our fire department or their fire department or the, or another agency, possibly. Do you know, Brandon, how to answer that?
So we made some amendments last year with that. So I'm, I'm unsure how to answer the question in terms of if they were to build a, a building that is already exempt under those existing exemptions that we adopted last year, and it exceeds the square footage, I do not know if we then, if we're going through an inspection process for a new business, if we'd have to then make them retroactively go in and put in that fire suppression. Uh, again, that would be, uh, one of those legal questions to, to kind of weigh through.
So clarify for me, when we made that change, was that overall, or was that for just that one hangar? I, I don't recall.
It was, it was, uh, for hangers in general, I believe.
Okay.
To adopt the, the airport suppression systems or whatever they have.
They're strongly use that, like?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
So we recognize that that might, might be something we need to address, uh, as we move forward. Making sure that the, that a fire suppression is, um, necessary.
For county? So there's nothing that I recall in the IGA that would call out, uh, that fire suppression.
Okay.
Um, if that's something that you all want to, to have looked at, um, as a, an option. But, uh, this would be just a straight agreement to say, county, this is your, uh, your building or your property that the building's going on, you, you handle any sort of liability, um, associated with it.
I'm sure this, my questions will be misunderstood. I want to go on the record and I will do it soon on Monday as well. I have a strong proponent for that airport and have been for my entire life here. And I think there's been some information, uh, that maybe suggests that that's not true. It's absolutely not true. And I'm not trying to complicate anything. I'm just trying to make sure that we at least, um, have it on the table so that we can, uh, mitigate any issues. So, thanks, sir.
Anything further, counsel? Mr. Douglas, item E, airport lift station.
Yes, sir. So I believe this goes back several years. Uh, I think it even predates, uh, Ms. Goldner. Uh, but she's got a, a hand sheet that she's going to kind of, uh, articulate, and then we'll kind of go from there.
Yes, so the airport lift station on the horseshoe area is BK, not Herger King before Kim. So, uh, Pickens County, I think we all know, constructed a sanitary sewer lift station at nine twenty-five Upper Salem Church Road. And that is the area that we affectionately call horseshoe. It is west of the airport runways. As we all know, Pickens County does not offer wastewater service. They do not have a publicly owned treatment works, and so they are unable to operate that station. The station is well within our service delivery area. And the discharge force main is actually already tied into a city-owned and maintained sanitary sewer manhole, which is on Airport Business Court. There is a business owner that has constructed a hangar very close to where the new terminal will be constructed. It is within this horseshoe area. And their intent is to tie to public utilities. They have paid the requisite water and sewer tax. We are ready to set that meter. However, we cannot set the meter if you do not have operational sewer. And in this case, because sewer is served by that lift station, operational sewer means that you must have an operational lift station, meaning that the city is operating that lift station, not the county. So we cannot set that meter. The owner cannot move in or any of those things until that lift station is operational by the city, and it has been turned over to the city for operation maintenance. So we are looking for direction from counsel this evening on how you would like for us to proceed.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, the chair, uh, over at the committee and I have talked about this at length, as well as Mr. Douglas, um, the airport lift station and the complexity around the situation. Again, this ties back into the conversation of where the airport is located, also where the hangar that has been built is located, partially in, partially out of the city, as well as where the terminal will be built, which is outside of the city. Uh, the chair and I have discussed this, um, on the phone and through email this week, uh, through Mr. Douglas. Uh, the chair has paperwork that we are waiting to receive back. Um, I would anticipate giving you an update on then potentially filing an annexation request, uh, officially with the city coming soon. Um, we do not offer sewer outside of the city, and therefore that is the hangar. And so we are waiting on that. Uh, at the meeting, I very well may call for a table on this item, waiting on the county to fulfill their obligations that have been communicated from me to the chair. Mr. Douglas, anything to add?
Just, just to let counsel know, the public know, whoever, part of, part of what, uh, just to reiterate what the mayor had said is, uh, from an operational standpoint, uh, we do have wastewater operators. We have a wastewater, we have many lift stations in our system. Uh, and what I at least articulated to the, uh, property owner or the, the, the user of the, the hangar was that in the simplistic terms is you have an entity, in this case, the county, build a, a lift station, okay, for an area. So that's, that's that. The city is the only entity who can operate that. So therefore, at the staff level, because that is a, a liability, because it's a fixed asset, that once you accept something, you accept ownership of it, there are certain costs associated with. It may not go out today or tomorrow, maybe five years from now, ten years from now. That's the unknown. If we were to just say, yep, we're going to put it in the system without going through the formality of the elected body, and then we approach you all and say, hey, unfortunately, that was something that, that happened, and it's going to cost X amount. As if we just need to make sure that it's documented that there was an acceptance of this lift station, similarly to the way that we would accept roads that then come into the city. Presumably at that point, when there is something that needs to be repaired, we put the, the money associated with it. That's a loosely way of, of saying it, but we don't view this as anything more than we've just got to ensure that the entirety of the hangar and then the future terminal is accepting, acceptable realm of in the corporate city limits as reflected to then go into, uh, the lift station.
And when the chair and I spoke this week, um, counsel, it, it's a wonderful conversation to have. I think that he's going to talk to his post commissioners, and he did advise me of their meeting schedule, so that's why there may be a lap, um, or a little bit of a gap from meetings. But I think the conversation at our next meeting, I'll have a good update from the chair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, any questions? All right. F, events update?
Oh, okay.
I figured she was just going to stay around.
Paying attention to the agenda, that's embarrassing. Okay, so, um, on this coming Monday's agenda, we should have at least one organization coming before. It sounds like the baseball team will have their application and their insurance provided to us so that we can provide kind of that stopgap ability to use the ball fields while we are working on that RFP or RFQ process for them to perhaps enter into, uh, long-term lease of the ball fields. We may also have Long Table on Main, which is the North Georgia Family Partners annual event that they have on South Main Street. They close the block between fifty-three West Church Street and Spring Street for this event. It is tentatively scheduled for Saturday, May the third. Uh, they do traditionally have hired some of our Public Works folks to work the event. They pay them on their own, so they end up closing the road. They help to string lights, do the decorating, things like that. But then they also run trash and pick up and, and help break everything down at the end of the evening as well. So I have asked you and Ash to be at this Monday evening meeting to come before you and ask for approval of her event application. Uh, when I spoke with her about a month ago, she was on schedule to come. I have not been able to reach her this, this week, though. So that is, I'm, I'm not sure. We may have to move that one to April. And that's what I have.
Interesting. We have that event on the runway one year.
And I'm pretty sure I'm on, so.
All right. Counsel, any questions about that item? All right. I'm Chief Bellports, weather again, subject.
Yes, sir. So believe it or not, um, I know it may not have felt like it's yesterday, uh, but since the last time we had met, uh, we've had a couple of files where the, the county's DOC have been activated. Uh, many of you had already received, um, email correspondence, uh, from staff, just keeping you informed. Uh, I like to continue to put forward good information and especially, uh, you know, part of what you'll see too is, uh, Josh doesn't have to be here to give this, but I want him to get kudos for stepping up. Chief Share, he continues to step up, uh, Chief Dawkins, Charles, uh, Kim, the whole team. So I wanted just to, to have it on the agenda to reflect that Public Works did, uh, i.e. Josh, come in, um, I think on the Sunday at three AM, uh, prior to the seventeenth, which is a recognized holiday. Came in for a few hours. Uh, thankfully, we were blessed that we didn't have any, um, major damage because of the high winds. And then fast forward to, uh, several days later, they activated again for potential inclement weather associated with that frozen precipitation. So again, the team kind of gathered together and, and when, I bring this up because we have not, we have not filled the depth chart just yet to where we have layers of individuals who are qualified to go and, and lead in that environment. So we do take a toll on our leaders. Um, so I just want to publicly commend them, uh, for them stepping up without being mandated. It's one of those when, when Kim kind of gets the team organized, uh, and Dr. Westbrook puts out something, it's all on board, and it's like, okay, well, I've got this, I've got this covered. So I just think it's nice for y'all to hear that they're just continuing to do it. And whenever we talk about not overtaxing our employees, uh, it's because you have a day like yesterday, you almost forget that a week prior or two weeks prior or a few days, there's that touch and go of what it's going to look like. Um, so that, that was it, mayor, just wanted to kind of give that update.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, any questions on that item? Seeing no other business, you'll afford for a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second. Any discussion, counsel? Call in favor?
All right.
Pose, say.